Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome here, and it's not raining, isn't that nice? If, Mr. Hudson, if you would come forward and you give our invocation, and then Commissioner Harvey will give our pledge of allegiance.
Gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful that we can come into your presence today because you've given us another day. We know, dear Lord, that every day is a gift from thee and it's an opportunity that we might serve not only our community, the ones that are around us, but others. Father, I pray, dear Lord, that you would give us a servant's heart. I pray that you'll give us a heart of compassion, Father, that you would give us a heart of wisdom. You said in your precious word, dear Lord, if anybody lacks wisdom, let them ask of thee and that you'll give it, and Father, you'll give it liberally. And Father, I pray, dear Lord, that as our county goes about its business today, that they will seek your wisdom and your guidance, that they would have a heart of compassion, and Father, that they would govern in such a manner, dear Lord, to help improve our lives. Father, we know that within our community, we have many that are hurting and many, dear Lord, that are dealing with issues. Father, help us to come alongside of them and lift them up and encourage them, and Father, help us to be a light shining in the darkness, pointing people to our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Father, may you bless this meeting, may you bless our community, may you bless this day. In Jesus' precious holy and wonderful name do we pray, amen.
Amen.
Do you want to join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Gentlemen, about the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes from May 8th.
At proper first.
I'll second.
A proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moves. Okay, we're gonna start with a proclamation as the May, as the court, Drug Court Month, and Mr. Pickens will read this. Yes, I was gonna say, Ms. Morris.
Judge Elizabeth Morris, come up front, please, to the podium.
Good morning.
Putnam County Proclamation Number 2018-45, declaring May 2018 Drug Court Month in Putnam County, whereas drug courts and other treatment courts have served over 1.4 million individuals, and whereas they are now recognized as the most successful criminal justice intervention in our nation's history, and whereas they save up to $27 for every $1 invested and up to $13,000 for every individual they serve, and whereas 75% of treatment court graduates will never see another pair of handcuffs, and whereas treatment courts significantly improve substance abuse, treatment outcomes substantially reduce substance abuse and crime, and do so at less expense than any other criminal justice strategy, and whereas treatment courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health professionals in the fight against substance abuse and criminality, and whereas there are now more than 3,000 drug courts and other treatment courts nationwide, and whereas drug courts and other treatment courts are the cornerstone of criminal justice reform sweeping the nation, and whereas treatment courts demonstrate that when one person rises out of substance use and crime, we all rise, and whereas the time has come to put a treatment court within reach of every eligible person in need, whereas the Putnam County Board of Commissioners recognizes the successful work of practitioners and participants of drug court programs to reduce the impact of drug abuse in our community. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of Commissioners in this meeting assembled on the 22nd day of May 2018, that the month of May 2018 is hereby declared Drug Court Month in Putnam County, and all citizens are urged to recognize the significant contributions of drug courts and congratulate this year's drug court graduates. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt this proclamation.
Second. All right, we have proper first, proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it moves, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you again for hosting us for our annual visit with y'all. I appreciate the continued support that we get from our commission. It is really a wonderful thing for the Drug Court program. I want to tell you a little bit about Drug Court. Some of you may have heard this before, but I think it's worth repeating every year because everybody needs to hear it. We spend somewhere between 13, 14 months, up to three years, with our participants, trying to help them change their lifestyle to become a drug-free person who is contributing to our society, who's not committing crimes, who's raising their children, who have their own homes, have their own jobs, have their own cars, and are just getting back to what we consider a normal everyday life. We have, you know, worked diligently with Drug Court. Tomorrow, excuse me, on Wednesday, we are going to have our 50th, count that, 50th graduation in Drug Court since it began.
Yeah.
As y'all know, Art Nichols was instrumental in getting the Drug Court started here in Putnam County, and I took it over when he retired, and I think I've been in it around eight years now, or somewhere thereabouts. But it's a wonderful experience for me as a judge. It's probably one of the most rewarding things that I do as a judge, but it gives back to our community. Our participants give back to the community. While they're in Drug Court, they do 140 hours minimum of community service. Most of the time, they're doing much more than 140 hours, but that's just a minimum that they have to do. They have to work on repaying any restitution, you know, they can't commit any new crimes, and as this proclamation said, the way Drug Court changes these folks' lives is miraculous. You're gonna have an opportunity to maybe hear from a few of them in just a few moments, but again, I want to thank the commission for your continued support of Drug Court and tell you how vital it is for us to continue this program here. It does, it saves lives, it, you know, diminishes crime, and just, you know, changes our community, and it's an important thing that we need in our community to keep changing. So I'm gonna introduce my Drug Court team to you now because I want to tell you about the people that work with. So if my Drug Court team will just stand up. Okay, so we have, in the first row, we have Ms. India Williams. She is a Drug Court Counselor with Stuart Marchman. Right behind her is Ms. Suzette Young. She's a Senior Drug Court Counselor with Stuart Marchman. Next to her is Ms. Kimberly Clark. She is our Drug Court Manager, and next to her is Ms. Sarah Morris. She is with the Public Defender's Office. She is the attorney that represents the Public Defender's Office. We also have Colonel Wells with us this morning. The Sheriff's Department is a super-partner for us. I mean, I just can't tell you how much they do to help us make sure that, you know, our folks are where they're supposed to be, doing what they're supposed to be, doing what they're supposed to be doing. We have a probation officer that works with us. He's not here this morning, and we also have a representative from the State Attorney's Office who's unable to be here this morning. But we meet collectively as a team each week before we have Drug Court, and thank you, folks, y'all can have a seat. We talk about each person's progress and, you know, what they need to be doing and how we need to encourage them, and so they are a very vital and important part. Ms. India and Ms. Suzette develop a very personal relationship with our participants, and they are very vital in our program, making sure that our participants are getting everything that they need from a counseling standpoint. At this point, I want to ask my Drug Court participants who were here this morning to stand up.
Wow.
So that's the, that's the community that we serve. Thank you, folks, y'all can see it, have a seat. That's the community that we serve, and they're here this morning to let you know that they think that Drug Court works and that compliance is the key, right, guys? Yeah, yeah. So at this point, I'm just gonna ask if there's any, any of my Drug Court team or any of the participants who'd like to come up and just say a couple of words. Anybody?
Not to be bashful, we don't buy it.
Good morning, Megan. Thank you for.
Good morning, Judge Morris. Good morning, Commissioners. I would just like to say that I believe Drug Court is essential to Putnam County because, like everything Judge Morris said, it is. It's, it's saving lives and bringing people back to reality. Living as an addict myself, it's so good. It feels so good to be part of the community, and Drug Court brings us closer to the community. And when we first all started this program, of course, we thought that we had to do this. This is, you know, where it's back in jail for us. But no, I can say all of these participants right now want this program, and our counselors in the Drug Court team are absolutely amazing. They work tirelessly for us, and the best thing about it is that they just don't do it because it's their job. They really care. They really care about us, and they care about this community. So I believe that we really need to keep this program going in Putnam County because not only is it benefiting the participants, but it's also benefiting our children to have healthy, strong, structured parents, and it will keep going. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else got a few words? Teresa, come on up. Come on up, Sarah.
Good morning. I just wanted to say a few words. Again, my name is Sarah Morris, and I am an Assistant Public Defender representing the Public Defender's Office. I am essentially the Criminal Defense Attorney that speaks on behalf of the participants in pre-meetings for their legal needs or anything that I feel I need to address as far as their rights. The first thing I wanted to mention is, in the proclamation, when it talks about the recidivism rates, and it is absolutely true that more than 75% of our participants are not going to reoffend, and that is absolutely huge. That just shows the effectiveness of this program. And then secondly, the only other thing I wanted to say is, the reason I love being the assigned defense attorney to Drug Court is because it is the only time that I'm in the courthouse that I am not in an adversarial position with the state attorney. So when I'm in other courtrooms, you know, my felony criminal cases, my misdemeanor cases, my juvenile offender cases, you know, the state attorney and I, we are in different positions. We are very much on the different side of the bar, if you will. But in Drug Court, the beauty of that is when Mr. Janask and I are sitting next to one another at a table, we are together. You know, it is the one time that I'm in court every Wednesday that I am with, you know, the team and Mr. Janask, and we are very much on the same side, and we are like, what can we do to work together through the legal system, through the justice system, to make this person's life better and to help them move forward in their rehabilitation? And it's just a very good feeling. It's very rewarding for me because the state attorney and I, who is normally prosecuting and I'm defending, and we're figuring out how we can meet a happy middle ground, it's very much just both of us working together to figure out, you know, what can we do on the legal side to assist this amazing team that we have here to move these individuals forward in their recovery and their rehabilitation? So it's very rewarding from a legal standpoint, and most importantly, it helps to prevent these individuals from returning to, you know, the prior decisions that they had and keeping that recidivism right down here in Putnam County, and I believe that's a huge part of what makes this program very beneficial. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Just one parting thing I forgot to tell you in my earlier comments. I wanted to point out that, as you said in the proclamation, this court saves the taxpayers of this county a lot of money. If we send someone to prison for a year, the average cost is somewhere between $32,000 and $35,000. And we keep someone in Drug Court for 16, 18 months, the cost is somewhere around $6,000 to $8,000. So you can, you know, the math's easy on that. We're saving a lot of money, and we're producing some productive citizens. We don't always produce productive citizens by sending someone to prison, but we can produce productive citizens through Drug Court. So again, thank you very much. I hope y'all have a great day, and I'll see y'all next year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Morris, would you mind then come up front and have a picture with us all?
We'll stand.
Yes.
We'll stand back here.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, congratulations.
Everybody's tall enough. Yeah, you gotta have a couple of rows.
Congratulations.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, congratulations.
Don't worry about it. Everybody's tall enough. Yeah, you gotta have a couple of rows.
Congratulations.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, congratulations.
Everybody's tall enough. Yeah, you gotta have a couple of rows.
Congratulations. Good job, guys.
One more, one more.
Oh, don't do that.
It's gonna be read by Mr. Turner, and if I could have Ms. Fisk meet me up front. Kathleen Fisk, is she here?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't see her over there.
The one in the Coast Guard outfit?
Yeah, the one in the.
Proclamation Number 2018-46, declaring May 19th through 25th, 2018, as National Safe Boating Week. For nearly 90 million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity. From coast to coast and everywhere in between, people are taking to the water and enjoying the time together boarding, sailing, paddling, and fishing. During National Safe Boating Week, the U.S. Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners encouraging all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. Safe boating begins with preparation. The Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for 70% of boating accidents and that life jackets could prevent more than 80% of those boating fatalities. Through boating safety procedures, carrying lifesaving emergency distress and communication equipment, wearing life jackets, attending boat safety boating courses, participating in the boat safety checks, and staying sober while navigating, we can help ensure boaters on America's coastal inland and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. National Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. Whereas on average, 650 people die every year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., approximately 80% of these fatalities are caused by drowning, and whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not the boat, equipment, or environmental factors, and whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County that the Board of County Commissioners is in support of Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2018, as the National Safe Boating Week and the start of the year-round effort to provoke safe boating. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners urges all those who boat to practice safe boating habits and wear a life jacket at all times while boating. Done, ordered, and proclaimed this 22nd day of May 2018. Mr. Chairman, I move this proclamation.
Second. Proper first, proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So done, thanks.
Pitch your time.
Okay, well, we need the rest of our crew.
Well, that's why I said, but nobody moved.
Come on, crew.
Nobody moved.
You know, my guys, they're shy.
Come on, guys.
Especially Mr. Turner. Come on up here.
Most of y'all know me.
Yeah.
Today is in the middle week of National Safe Boating. It started actually on Saturday, and this is a great time for the county, which we appreciate so much to recognize safe boating. Putnam County has, we are just so fortunate to have the waterways that we have, you know, we have the river, we have lakes, and it's a time to just, summer's hitting, to bring recognition to all boaters, whether you have a big boat, a small boat, whether you have a canoe, a kayak, all boats need to be safe. And the biggest thing that people don't realize is, it only takes five minutes before you leave to make sure that you have everything you need. Boating is, can be a lot of fun, but when you get out there and you're missing a life jacket, or you're missing a throwable, or you're missing a flare, these things make the difference in accidents. If you take that five minutes before you leave the house and say, okay, let me go through my checklist, we give these out free, and they will be out there on Saturday. It shows a checklist of everything you need on your boat. Saturday coming up, on the 26th, we will have our event down at the City Dock. We'll have booths set up there, and we'll have VE examiners that will go and do free inspections on your boat. At this time, you know whether you have something or not, and we just, if you don't have it, then you give us a call and we'll come back out and check your boat. It doesn't always have to be done there. We can make appointments. It is all free to the public. And you will see these all over. It says National Safe Boating Week, and it tells the time. Bright pink, guys, see? And they'll have some out in the, out there. The biggest thing that we're doing this year is really trying to stress on educating the public. Everybody knows I've been a boater for 20 years, but when you go through the list, you're missing things. And this is just a good way for us to give back to the community as boaters and all work together to see that boating is safe and we keep this weekend accident-free. Now also, we had donated t-shirts. The first 50 kids that come will get t-shirts. They have different decals on them, and this helps encourage the kids to wear their life jackets at all times. So this is just another thing that we have that helps out during, as an incentive. In the last years, we've had people come from, grandmas came from Keystone, from Hawthorne, just to have their children try life jackets. Their dad was getting a boat, they had those lovely orange ones that everybody likes, so she wanted to know how to do it. So people are actually coming from different areas in Putnam and around Putnam to make sure their children know how to wear the life jackets, to know about safe boating, to see what they're missing, and just to get an overall picture of how to be safe on the waterways. So I thank you very much for your time and hope you'll have a nice, safe weekend, and I hope to see everybody there. The time is from 9 to 1 o'clock, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now gonna have the proclamation for National Public Works Association Week. That'll be read by Mr. Harvey and Mr. Tompkins, if you'd meet me at the podium.
Busy time in Putnam County this week is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2018-47, National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to substantial and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Putnam County. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees from state and local governments and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is a public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Putnam County to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding the importance of public works and public works programs in the respective communities. Whereas the American Public Works Association has created, or has celebrated, the annual National Public Works Week since 1960. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners that the week of May 20th through the 26th, 2018, is recognized as National Public Works Week in Putnam County, done, ordered, and adopted this 22nd day, May 2018. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of this proclamation.
We have a proper approval.
I second.
And a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so done.
You want your picture with us, too?
Of course. I just wanna.
We'll get our picture.
Thank everybody for this, for all our public work staff, and everybody works very hard for the county. This is just a small token of your appreciation for the work they do.
Yeah, good.
Come on, let's go get our picture. Mr. Suddick, you gonna join us?
Sure.
Sure.
I'm gonna stand by address. Make me look cool.
I'll stay. We're now gonna have a presentation for summer reading by Jeremy Yates, and I know I'm gonna mess that name up. Misha Johns, Misha Johns. Please, they're with the Putnam County Library System, if you'd come up.
So, thank you, guys. This is, we're talking about the kickoff of summer reading program. The official kickoff is Saturday, June 2nd, which is exactly one week from this Saturday, at 10:00 a.m. at all five libraries in Putnam County. Now, before I talk about anything else, I do want to give a quick shout-out to Gage Norris. He's a 17-year-old who's actually graduating from Palaka High School this week. He won the Libraries Invention Convention. He not only took first place in the Palaka competition, he took grand prize, the winner overall between all five libraries in Putnam County, and he tied for first place with Levy County as well because they did the competition with us. So he just picked up his 3D printer from the library yesterday, so congratulations to Gage. But yeah, like I said, Putnam County is celebrating reading this summer, beginning with our kickoff on June 2nd. Now, the kickoff is the best time to sign up for Summer Reading Challenge, pick up your reading logs, and also to find out what other programs we have scheduled throughout the summer. And there are programs for children, teens, and adults, so please stop by. Most of our libraries will be doing something extra special on the day. The Melrose Library, for instance, is bringing out Marineland to do Songs of the Sea, which is a special presentation. Interlochen, for instance, is bringing out Chuck and Murray for a special musical event. And then at the Palaka Library, we have something extra, extra special going on. We are hosting the Toddler Preschool Festival with the Kwanis, the Early Learning Coalition and Hope FM. So this is an annual event that we hope will be hosted at the Palaka Library from now on. There's some special guests, including Robin Robinson. She's gonna be doing a storytime with Pete the Cat, and they're gonna be giving out lots of free Pete the Cat books afterwards. Also, Anna Moo, Climathy the Clown, Sparky the Clown. There's gonna be face painting, balloon twisting, shaved ice, popcorn, all sorts of fun stuff, but at its core, it's a family resource fair, so this is great for parents, especially of toddlers and preschoolers, who want to know what is available in the community to meet their needs. But of course, there's lots of fun crafts and activities for the kids as well, so come out next, not this Saturday, but the Saturday after that, at 10:00 a.m. to any library, but the Palaka Library, like I said, is hosting the Toddler Preschool Festival. And then after that, we are actually going to be doing six weeks of themed storytimes. That's something Misha will be talking about a little bit more in a second. There's storytimes for ages zero to five and six to 10. Lots of fun activities for teens as well. There's a teen writing and art competition. There's a workshop called Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens that Dave Powell from the. that Dave Powell from the Health Department and SWAT, the Students Working Against Tobacco, are gonna be doing at the, the libraries. There's Lego competitions, there's maker workshops, which involve 3D printers and robots and fun things like that. We have special guests like Dr. Holly Thomas, who does our STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math workshops. And some more clowns, Pinky B. and Groovy will be coming out. They're not just clowns, they're also magicians and a comedy duo. Those, uh, they're coming out to all five libraries. But like I said, there's stuff for adults as well. We are doing, uh, something called Putnam at Heart, a local writing competition that will eventually become a literary magazine. That we're soliciting short personal essays of 500 to 200, uh, 2,500 words, poetry, song lyrics, one-act plays that reflect Putnam County. So whether you were born here, or whether you moved here and you stayed, we're all Putnam at Heart. So, uh, that competition is this summer with, um, the deadline being at the end of the summer, August 4th. We're doing that with, uh, Crescent City Women's Club, the Magi, the Arts Council of Greater Palaca, and a lot of, uh, other, uh, groups like that. And then finally, I do wanna mention that, uh, we're doing something called a How-To Fest. Uh, we're doing this at all five libraries. And, uh, those are essentially little mini workshops that's held throughout the summer. A lot of those workshops are, um, kinda commercials for longer, full-length workshops later in the summer. It's set up sort of like a tasting event so that, um, you can come to the library on the day, visit, uh, a lot of different stations, little mini workshops and presentations, find out more about those things, sign up for them, and then come back later in the summer for those full-length presentations. So there's story-building workshops with Judy White, which is part of the Putnam at Heart. There's line dancing, there's, uh, later in the summer, we're gonna have gardening classes and all sorts of stuff. So there's things, like I said, for all ages. And just a quick note, uh, when we put age guidelines on our programs, that doesn't mean that people outside of those ages cannot come to those programs. All programs at the library are free of charge and open to anyone. So when we put age guidelines, that's just so that you kinda have an idea about what to expect from the program. And then Misha's gonna talk a little bit about storytime.
Hi, everyone. So I'm here to talk to you about our six-week Storytime Program. The theme for this year is music and libraries rock. And the specific one for our library is to the beat of the world. So what we decided to do is to take instruments from all around the world. We're gonna learn about a different instrument every week and how it was developed in certain countries. They're gonna have a little bit of history about the instrument. Then we're gonna read stories and fairy tales about those instruments from the countries. So we'll be traveling all around the world. We're gonna be going to Japan, Russia, Paraguay, Cuba. We'll visit the Cherokee Nation in North America. We're gonna go all over the world, Ghana, Malawi, Spain, Austria. And in each country, we're gonna learn about a particular instrument. Our first week and second week are both drums. Then we're gonna learn about the use of song and dance in music. We're gonna learn about stringed instruments, uh, flutes and pipes. And lastly, we'll be talking about guitars. So every week, they're gonna have, uh, both three, two to three stories, some of which will be actually projected up on a large screen so they can see the beautiful artwork. We'll have some videos such as, um, for one of our books about a girl in Paraguay, she's actually a real girl, and we can see her real band playing with the instruments they created out of the garbage that they live on. So some very inspirational stories, some of which are true, some very old stories, several thousand years old. As he said, they're gonna be broken up into two groups for under five and then from five to 10. And again, also, as Jeremy said, we let you wiggle outside. So if any of you want to come and do crafts and sing songs with us, we are totally invited. We would love to have you at any of our events. We'll be singing songs in the Ashanti language and Japanese. We're gonna learn some hula dancing and what the different gestures mean and how they tell stories with their dance. So it should be a great time for everyone, and we hope to see everybody there, especially some of you. Some of you can hulu for us. So thank you so much for your time.
Good job, Misha.
Thank you very much.
Very good job.
Thank you very much.
I love the way you presented that thing right on cue, too, by the way. Vanna White better watch out. That was good. Misha John's gonna get her job.
I have some of these, um, I have some of these. So I'll gonna be back, sitting in the back, back here throughout the meeting. So if we have breaks or after the meeting, if anybody wants them, come up and grab them. They're, uh, a schedule of what we're gonna be doing all summer long, so.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if she gets you on, uh, if she gets you the hula dance, I sure want a video of it.
I don't think that's gonna happen. Mr. Pageant, you're, uh, is gonna have a presentation for the Children's Trust Fund?
Good morning to everyone. I wanna thank you for the opportunity to reappear before you and continue our conversation about a Children's Trust Fund at Putnam County. I wanna say two things at the outset. One, I noticed on your agenda that, um, I was identified as being associated with Lift Putnam and we very definitely am. And our board has unanimously, is unanimously supportive of the concept of a Children's Trust Fund for Putnam County. But again, we do not claim authorship nor ownership. We are just one spoke in a, in a ever-enlarging wheel here in the county that would love to see a Children's Trust Fund of Putnam County, uh, become a reality. And the second thing I wanna mention, uh, I know at the last opportunity I had to speak with you folks, I turned 10 minutes into an hour. And I promised to be much, much briefer than that this morning. When we ended our conversation at the workshop, it seems that there were, or are two questions before you folks or decisions that you have to make about two matters that are essential to the future direction of this movement. One of which, of course, is whether or not to put this item on the ballot at all. As you know, the statute gives the people of Putnam County and other counties, for that matter, the opportunity to vote at the polls as to whether or not they think they need or want a program such as the Children's Trust. I, I don't wanna sound like an eighth-grade civics teacher, but we all know that the right and authority of the people to speak at the polls as to how they wish their government to be constituted and to operate is a, is a fundamental bedrock concept of our democracy. So I'm hoping that that first question, you know, is perhaps not as challenging for you as the second question. Essentially, our message as to the first question is simply let the people decide if they want this program and if they need this program. And after they've been sufficiently informed and have had an opportunity to participate in the process, let them express their will at the poll. The second question is perhaps a little bit more challenging. And we've had an opportunity, and I say we, I mean a number of people throughout the county, have considered when should you decide to put it on the ballot? When should it be on the ballot? When is the best time for the people to express their will on this issue? And you only have, obviously, two dates that you can choose from. So you're obviously very confined. And that's either the November the 6th election or the August the 28th primary. Now, since we had an opportunity to talk at the workshop, we have done some research on this. We've done some polling, and I don't mean we've hired a pollster, but, uh, there's so many people that are literally volunteering to become a part of this process, a part of this program, um, that we've had an opportunity to talk to people from all parts of the county. One, are you interested in a program like that? And secondly, if the county commission saw fit to let you vote on it, when do you think would be the most advantageous or the best time for Putnam County? We've also looked, since I last spoke with you, outside the county. There's about 12 counties in the state of Florida that this year are allowing the public to consider the same issue, that is a Children's Trust, or similar programs that benefit children through either sales taxes or ad valorem taxes. And I'll, I'll address, you know, both of those sources of information with you. As to the, the local, uh, response, people have made some very accurate observations. And, um, Mr. Overturf, when he was here, you know, and spoke, well, actually at the workshop, but he shared information with you about the upcoming elections. And as to the November election, he pointed out, and you're all aware that this November, we're going to have a lot of constitutional amendment questions. In November, it's going to be a very long, perhaps to some frustrating ballot experience. There's gonna be an awful lot of things on the November ballot that are important. And again, I'm referring to primarily to the constitutional amendments. But things, again, that do not directly and exclusively affect the lives of people in Putnam County. You know, they have an impact, a lot of it is legalese on the entire state of Florida. But those 12 issues do not exclusively and solely affect Putnam County. They're not local issues, they're statewide issues. And whether we like it or not, we know from our own experience and experiences that have been shared with us by others that oftentimes, when you get into a three-page ballot, which is likely to be the length, I talked to Mr. Overturf yesterday, he would have been here today. He's at a conference outside Putnam County and couldn't be. But as he indicated at the workshop, this ballot's gonna be very lengthy. And there's a good possibility, probability that what's called ballot or voter fatigue could well sit in as people, and I'm, I'm gonna be pretty frank, as they wade through the constitutional amendments and all the legalese and the language, before they get to the local issue. Not the only local issue, but before they get to the Children's Trust issue, should you decide that the public is entitled to vote on this? So, there's concern, um, about whether or not that's going to hamper the ability of Putnam Countyans in general to make a well-reasoned decision about this issue since, and again, I'm gonna be frank, those constitutional amendments are gonna be laborious. If, if, if a person goes and reads each and every one of them as they should, they're gonna go through all of that before they get to this very important local issue on the ballot. And that's not the superintendent's, uh, excuse me, that's not the supervisor of elections's fault. That's where the issue has to be placed according to state law. So a lot of folks say August would be the better month to focus on local issues. Because that August ballot is not going to have those constitutional amendments, perhaps other issues that, yes, are of statewide importance, but they do not focus exclusively upon the welfare and wishes of the people of Putnam County. As you know, we'll have our local elections, you know, school board members, county commissioners, other folks that represent our area. And the consensus is that August, August would be the time or the best time to put it on the ballot if you choose to put it on the ballot. Now, we did step outside Putnam County to see what other counties are doing, as I mentioned. There's 12 counties in the state of Florida that, as I said, are entertaining similar issues this election year in 2018. Of those 12, two of them decided, and I've got the, should, should you wanna know the exact counties, I've got that information here, but of those 12, two of them decided to address this Children's Trust, Children's Benefit issue by a special election, and that was the only item on the agenda. We're not suggesting that we do that. Obviously, there's a lot of expense and time could be a problem. And incidentally, uh, it passed in both of those special elections. Of the remaining 10 counties, six of them have chosen the August date. And we've talked to people in other counties, asked for their reasoning, what was their preference, and they have reflected the same opinions that we're receiving here from local folks is that this year, the November ballot is gonna be so congested that they just thought that August gave local county people the better opportunity to focus on that and address that and reason with it before they got in to the more, the longer and more difficult, maybe not more difficult, but, you know, more expansive, um, ballot in November. So only four, four of the 12 counties that, that are having similar issues in the state of Florida this year on their ballots, only four of them have chosen to put it on the ballot in November. And obviously, that's, you know, thirty, a third of the counties. So two-thirds of the counties have chosen not to use the November date. So I offer, I offer that suggestion to you. I hope that you will see fit to let the people decide for themselves whether they want this initiative or not. And it seems like what we're hearing, and we agree, um, and I say we, I don't mean just Lift Putnam, I mean all the people that are supportive of having this issue on the ballot. Many of them are here today. We would recommend that you strongly consider the August the 28th date. That will give us 100 days from today to promote, to inform, and to discuss this issue with the public. And they would have a chance to react to it and to vote upon it before they had to deal with all those other issues that they'll get a chance to vote on in November. So, um, do we have time? Yes, uh, Mr. Oversurf talked, as I said, with me yesterday. And he said, should you see fit to put it on the ballot? And if you chose as your preference August rather than November, that would still give him time to compose his ballot and get it together to be sent on in to Tallahassee. He said, in fact, you know, if, uh, you folks decide to put it on the ballot and decide that August is, as others have indicated, the better of the two dates, he can start working with that ballot language right away. And he said it wouldn't be a problem to have it done by the 1st of July. So, I hope that's a little briefer than I was last time. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I don't know if I've really missed anything. I haven't paid too much of attention to my notes. You know, we've, we've heard, and I'm gonna repeat it, but we've heard it from a number of folks in the last few weeks. And that is government can't solve all of our problems. Federal government, state government, local government. You know the struggles yourselves that, you know, we're having right here in Putnam County with the lack of funds to do things that are badly needed. So the time comes, and this is what the legislature has done. They've given local counties the opportunity to go to the polls and to decide for themselves if they wanna step up to the plate and make a philosophical and financial commitment to try to raise the level of the quality of life and deal with local problems. So, uh, we hope that, that you will see fit to put it on the ballot. And, uh, we think that the, the more informed opinions are to put it on an August 28th date rather than later on. Any questions? I'll be glad to share anything that you might have. We have shared some, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pageant, um, as I suggested during the workshop, I am in favor of letting the people decide. But, um, I'm in favor of the November ballot, as you well know. I think if our constitution requires amendments to be done in November because the, the general masses are there, I think something of this importance should require the same, the same thing. I understand about the 12 counties, but the math doesn't work. Because if one county would've went one of the way, it would be a 50-50 split at that point. Because two went to the general, they had their own specials, that left six out of 10. went to the general, they had their own specials, that left six out of 10. So, one would have done, the other had been half and half. So, I'm, I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that.
I might add, if one of those four had decided to go the other way...
The other way, that would have been 70-30.
But I understand, it's been your opinion.
So, I just, I, I think what bothers me here, we're going to set this up, and then we're going to form a committee after, but who's going to educate the people between now and... You're, Liff Putnam really doesn't want to be that person, you're a spoke in the wheel as you referred to, you're not the wheel. But the wheel's not built until after the election takes place, and that...
Well, sir, let me share, I'm glad you touched upon that, because the wheel is being built in contemplation of this issue being on the ballot. We have had over 50 folks that have contacted, not just Liff Putnam, but representatives and members of other organizations, civic organizations, people have come forward and say, here's my email address, send me this, I'm a member of the so-and-so Rotary Club, I'm a member of this organization, I want to speak to them. We have been distributing a lot of information, printed information, in anticipation of this item hopefully being put on the ballot. But we are all, have tentatively started making plans for billboards, social media, and this isn't just Liff Putnam, Liff Putnam's going to carry their share of the load, but it's going to just be a part of the load. As I said, social media, direct mail, everything that you could imagine in a movement such as this. And we have people in place that have already volunteered to take leadership positions, should you see fit, fit to put it on. We could start today, in fact, we've already started. But this isn't a Putnam, a Liff Putnam initiative.
And, and let me say this, Mr. Pad, I don't believe, I understand voter fatigue, but I think the responsible voter does the right thing at the polls, and they really are serious when they get there. I know I am, I, I don't take that lightly, I do my homework prior to going, and I vote on the issues that matter to me, and I do, so...
I appreciate that.
One thing that I've been asked in the public about, how do we get rid of this when we don't want it anymore? And since we're not a charter county, okay, we, we can't, I think the law says they have to, we have to get 6,500 petitions to put something back on the ballot or something like that. Answer that question to the constituents that are watching today. How does the county commissioner, five years, 10 years down the road, they don't want it anymore, you know, not just a handful, I'm talking people don't want it, how do they get rid of it?
The same way it was created to begin with, and that's by the people. It doesn't require a petition or a large number of people to petition a governmental entity such as yourselves. The statute specifically says that if the public becomes dissatisfied with it prior to its sunsetting in the 12th year, if it just turns out to be a mistake, then you folks have the opportunity to put it back on the ballot. And if the public doesn't want it anymore, they can vote it out or keep it. It's, it's that simple. And then, there's also the process, if you have council members who are acting inappropriately or just should be removed from the council, then there's a process whereby recommendations can be made from the public, and I think that includes county commissioners to the governor, and the governor has the authority to remove that person, even though they may be this, an elected official to some other post in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Pad, Mr. Chairman, I yield the floor.
Mr. Padgett, I want to thank you. This is not something we're going to vote on today, and this is something that a lot of discussion will be made in our workshop, because there's, I know you're presenting all the pros, but there are also a lot of cons, so we do appreciate it, and thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, and we did have an opportunity to share some ballot language and some ordinances that have been passed in other counties with your legal staff, and if there's anything else that any of us can do, just let us know, and thanks again for the time.
Okay, Mr. Turner.
Yeah, Jim, hang on a second, please, a couple of, couple of comments and questions. The first one being, the committee, the Children's Trust Committee that runs it, that's actually laid out by statute, correct?
Yes.
You presented that, so there was five, there was five people that were like a county commissioner, superintendent of schools and such, and then there were five people that were appointed by the governor from a list of three per person, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Five of them, as you say, are set out by statute, and it is a member of the Board of County Commission, as chosen by you folks, a member of the school board, is chosen by the school board superintendent of schools, one of the judges that, in the county that handles juvenile cases, and then a representative from the Department of Children and Families, those five are mandated by the statute. And the other five, the governor picks from a list submitted by you folks to the governor.
And what date was that, that Supervisor Over turf said that we needed the information by, again, you said it, but I missed the date?
Well, he, he said, as soon as he knows if you're deciding to put it on the ballot. And I'm, I, I don't want to presume anything, but most of these other ordinances that have been enacted in the state that put it on the ballot also contain the ballot language itself. So, if you decide to enact an ordinance, I'm imagining him that will probably have the ballot language that you think is appropriate. He said as soon as he saw that language, he can start doing what he needs to do, and if at the end of the process, something happened and it wasn't actually going to be a reality, he said it's no problem, he just takes it off the ballot. But that's by, it sounds like the first week in July is when they would have their final version, but he said they could start adding to it, and the language can't be over so many words, so...
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I, I'd like to ask our attorney, our, our next step here, if we decide to move forward on this, would be to pass a motion saying that we're going to come up with an ordinance that says we're going to do this. What is the next step making this happen if the board decides to move forward?
Well, we, administration would need direction from the board by motion or consensus to, to advertise the proposed ordinance for a hearing before one of your upcoming meetings. So, we would need that direction to, to actually advertise the ordinance, and then also direction at the same time as to when, which ballot you would want it on, because that would be something that we'd need to put into the ordinance that gets advertised. And, and I believe you have the draft of the, of the ordinance that we would be advertising to come before you. Certainly, no decision about putting it on the ballot would be made until we actually have the public hearing on the proposed ordinance.
Mr. Chair, if I might follow up on the previous question from Commissioner Turner, we all received an email from Supervisor Elections, Mr. Over turf, in order for us to be able to get this on the July, I'm sorry, on the August 28th primary, we would need to have the ordinance in place no later than June 22nd. Now, we do have Board of County Commission meeting scheduled for June 12th, so we could certainly make that deadline there. But we would need direction, like Mr. Manning was saying, as to the will of the board this morning, as to the date, whether it be the primary in August or the general in November. But we do have a deadline of June 22nd from Mr. Over turf, I'm getting everything to his office to be included in the August primary.
I guess I need to clarify, I thought this, this would be discussed in our workshop.
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, we discussed this at our previous workshop to come here today for the commission to hear the presentation from Mr. Padgett again this morning for a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, or for a recommendation from the Board of County Commissioners on whether or not we're going to move forward with the initiative and put it on the ballot, and then make a decision as to whether it will be on the August primary or the November general ballot.
Yes, sir, Mr. Harvey.
Mr. Suggs, can I, if the board so decided to say, okay, on the 12th, we're going to have ordinance, do we have to dedicate the date at, right today, or can we just say, you know, we're looking at these two dates, and the ordinance will pick that? Because I, I wasn't prepared today to do this, we were getting a presentation. But it seems like if, if the board decides to do it for August, then the 12th is a, is a pretty serious date for us. And if it's in November, then it's not so serious of a date for us. So, my question is, do we have to today whittle that in stone, or can we just say, let's talk about the ordinance on June 12th and leave the dates... We know two dates, we know those dates, and we could pick that, and we can change ordinances, titles and, and wording as we talk about.
Commissioner Harvey, I don't think that would be an issue for us to be able to handle that, but I will defer to our, our legal counsel to make sure that we're not trading on some areas here that, that, that needs to, we need to be concerned with.
Yeah, we can do that, I just, I mean, I, I've put a date in there, in the ordinance, but certainly, once you're actually have the public hearing on the ordinance, y'all can decide whether to leave that date or to, or to choose the other date. It's certainly up to you. So, I just have one in there, I think I used the date for the November election. But again, when you actually vote on passage of the ordinance, if you decide to pass the ordinance, you know, that motion can, can direct whether it be the, the date of the primary or the date of the general. So, right now, we have a date of November in the sample ordinance that, that's before us, well, not before us today, that could be before us on June 12th. Right.
And Mr. Chair, just for clarification, you're correct that this meeting was a presentation this morning of Mr. Padgett, but staff needs direction from the commission as to whether or not we need to, we need to be prepared to advertise the ordinance for the June 12th meeting. If we don't advertise it for the June 12th meeting, then we've missed that deadline.
That's right, with that, it needs to be advertised for June 12th in order to make, to make the primary ballot. And, and we, we need to, you know, have a decision whether we're going to at least move forward with, with advertising the ordinance, we need that decision today if there's even an option for the primary, because we have to advertise the ordinance ahead of time.
All right, Commissioners, any comments?
I'm, I'm clear on it.
So, do we want to move ahead for the ordinance?
I believe that's what we're going to have to do.
So, you're saying that, if I can, Mr. Chair...
Yes, sir, please.
Just to be crystal clear, the June 12th date, we will have a hearing, is that right?
Correct, it would be a hearing on whether or not to put the question on the ballot.
Either date.
And which, but day, which ballot?
Either date.
Correct.
November or August.
Correct.
Okay, I'm clear. So, that does give us that cushion, that room to learn more about this, to see more that's involved, to, to get more affiliated with it, so if you need that in the motion, I'll offer it.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Harvey, go ahead.
I want to be clear now, right now...
Excuse me, there's a motion on the floor, it either has to be seconded or dies for a lap.
We can discuss it, so, let's go.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have a first and a second, all those in favor?
We have discussion, Mr. Chairman.
You're right, you're right, you're right, you're right. Okay, discussion is open.
So, right now, the motion that Mr. Label made basically is for the wording as it stands now with a November date, but we could change that June 12th for an earlier date if we felt that as a board, we needed to do that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Was that your motion, Mr. Commissioner?
It is.
Okay.
Is that your second?
Yes, that's fine. So, it, under discussion, Mr. Chairman, so basically what we've done today is allow for a hearing on the ordinance, on whether we're going to move forward with it on June 12th, is that correct? That was the motion, that was mine intended to second.
The hearing would be on June 12th.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
And as, as I understand, this is the only way that this could be put on the ballot, not by petition or any other way, is if the commissioners allow to be it put on the, on the petition, on the...
The statutes...
On the ballot, so people can choose whether they support this or not.
Yes, sir. Yeah, the, the statute is very specific, says it has to be pursuant to an ordinance passed by the county commission, and after you have a chance to further look at the, the ordinance, most of these, and the one I think that Mr. Manning has referred you to, specifically provides that if it's put on the ballot but doesn't pass, it's void. So, you don't have to come back and undo it.
Go ahead, Mr. Harvey.
One last housekeeping, Mr. Manning, we listened to it on the 12th, do we have a, do we have a 5:05 meeting to bring it back before the, the citizens of Putnam County?
Not statutorily, but if that's what you want to do, then y'all can...
Because some municipalities are required to have a second reading and things like that, we can do it on the first reading, which is confusing to some citizens, but, okay, I just needed to...
Right. And, I mean, throwing it out there since you asked the question, I mean, you, you could make that first reading at 5:05, we could have a special meeting that evening if, if that's what you all wanted to do, if that was your concern. Okay, Mr. Turner.
Mr. Chairman, if I understand the motion in the second, all that we're motioning today in the second is, is that we're going to have a hearing on the 12th to see if we want to move this forward.
Correct.
I'm not saying we do, we're not saying we're for it, we're not saying anything other than we're willing to have a hearing and, under the legal process, that if we decided to move it forward, we could on the 12th. I think that's my understanding, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, with that being said, under discussion, Mr. Harvey's suggestion or curiosity to an evening meeting, probably to include more of the voting public, is a, would take a second motion outside the one I made.
Okay.
Right, Counsel?
Yes, correct.
All right, so, Mr. Harvey.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment on the motion to...
No.
No?
You're the chairman, but I have a motion on the floor.
He has a motion on the floor, so we can go ahead and close out your motion.
You as the chairman, you can close the discussion, or we can call...
At this point, we're saying we're going to have an ordinance, or a hearing on the 12th. We've had a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to, I'd like to add an amendment to the motion, or to...
At this point, it is a motion, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, on the 12th, have that hearing at 5:05.
Okay, so we have a proper motion to have a hearing at 5:05.
And I'll second that.
Okay, and a proper second. Any discussion?
Under discussion, can we just have a minute to check our schedules and see if we're available at 5:05 on the 12th? I mean, I'll make myself available, no matter what, unless my child's getting married or something.
And then you can move the date?
Are they planning that, or do you not know?
Oh, I just died in the last to know.
You know what, we have a City of Palacan meeting at 6 o'clock, we have a City of Palacan joint meeting at 6 that night.
I thought we had something on June 12th, yeah.
We should in conflict.
That's, that, yeah, June 12th is your normal Board of County Commission meeting followed by your Board of County Workshop at 2 o'clock that day.
And we do have a city-county meeting at 6 o'clock scheduled.
Sounds like a long day.
Well, we're going to be here anyhow, I mean, we may be late getting started on the city-county joint meeting, but...
Okay.
I'm ready, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion? Okay, all right, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, move. So, you have, your direction is...
Is that unanimous?
Yes, that's unanimous. We'll have the hearing on June 12th, and then we'll have a meeting on, I mean, a hearing on 5:05.
That's right.
On June 12th.
It's the one hearing at 5:05.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I...
Thank you.
See you on the 12th.
All right, thank you. With that, we're going to take a recess of our board meeting and reopen our, or open our port authority.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of it, the approval of the minutes for May 8th.
If I could, yes, sir. Okay.
Yeah, I got to approve.
I, I, there's a flaw in the minutes.
Okay, let me make the motion, and then we... Okay. Let me make the motion and then we can clean that up.
Okay.
So regular meeting and May 8th regular workshop meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a proper motion.
Okay, I'll second for discussion.
Proper second, okay, open for discussion.
Okay. On the first paragraph of the minutes of the last meeting, it's got me making a motion and seconding my motions.
You were really quick that day.
That's hard to do. I'm not saying it didn't happen. If it did, we need to clean that up. All right, that's all.
I didn't know you could do that.
I didn't either. I guess, Tony, we, we go back to the audible?
And clean that up?
Okay, all right. I'd like it to reflect.
Do we need to wait until the next meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I would draw my motion to approve the minutes until they're corrected.
Okay.
So we can just bring them back to the next meeting corrected and vote on them then?
That's all we'll do.
Don't know what the correction is.
We'll wait until.
Who made the motion?
Yeah, we'll wait.
Okay, so let's move to our public comment. What was the status of the workshop meeting?
Yeah, we can still, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, you can still go through without.
Chairman, I make a motion we approve the workshop minutes from May 8th.
Okay.
There's a very important piece of business in there we need to.
Yeah, okay. Is there a second?
Okay, all right. So we have a proper motion to approval of the regular workshop meetings, proper second.
Second.
Okay, and a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, open for discussion? No discussion. Okay. Then we'll move now to public comment on Port Authority items. Any public comment on any Port Authority items? Seeing none, we'll close that. We'll move to administrations. Offer to pay for the buyer's broker. Okay, is that up to Mr. Manning?
Mr. Suggs, I think.
Mr. Suggs?
Sure, Mr. Chair. There was a discussion at the workshop on, let me get my minutes real quick. I had to pull it up and moved on. I'm sorry. Yeah, the May 8th workshop discussion was to whether or not we wanted to pay a brokerage fee of 3% for a potential sale or future sales for the property located there at PRC Way, also known as the spec building. It was discussed at the workshop. It was consensus of the Board of County Commissioners to bring it forward for your, for your review and either approval or denial this morning as a way of a motion as to approve the payment of a 3% commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
After discussing this in workshop and giving it some more thought, I, I would like to discuss possibly something even different from this. I think we need to list that building with a national firm, somebody that can try to sell it. We can still use it for economic development. We could still offer incentives if we chose to do so. There's still, all that can be done. But right now, basically what we're doing is we're having our Chamber of Commerce, which are, which is our economic development branch, market the building. They're not realtors. They're economic development experts. So, you know, I think that it would, it would behoove us to go ahead and list this building with a, a national firm for whatever the going brokerage rate is. And like I said, I don't see where it's going to hinder us at all in any economic development that may take place in the future.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond to Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Turner, the only thing that concerns, concerns me, and I would like Mr. Bergen to come to the podium, if you would, please, sir, is we were contracted under a national realtor firm, commercial real estate firm, and Mr. Bergen were to find a deal within the state that would tie the building up. Is that a potential conflict? Out of respect, I'm just trying to, to bring clarity to that.
Brian Bergen, Vice President, Economic Development. Actually, I think you can word your contract that however you choose with a broker. If we would actually get some, a lead from someone and they would take the building themselves, you know, they may get a flat fee or, you know, reimbursement for their expenses in the market.
As long as we had verbiage speaking to the.
I think you can word contracts however you choose to when it comes to real estate, you know, within the law.
I support you then, Commissioner Turner, completely on that. I think you're exactly right.
You see where we have nothing to lose and everything to gain.
It might bring a business too, potentially.
I completely concur with that as well. It would bring us a lot more visibility to the building.
Mr. Harvey?
So for clarity, we can build into our contract basically with a national brokerage firm that you're going to get X amount of dollars, but there's an out for us if we need to have that out. If you bring somebody to the table or somebody else does, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, for example, if we had a lead coming in from one of our regional organizations or for ourselves, there would be obviously a reduced fee that the broker would get, you know, reimbursing them for something. They always have marketing time and effort in there and they would get something.
Which is basically where we started this conversation. If they had have sold it, then the, then the broker that they were selling to or whatever would have got their 3%. So basically, I, you know, I'm suggesting that we do where we started today, that if they sell it, they'd be in the chamber through the economic development branch of the county, then they would, we would still pay the 3% brokerage fee that they requested as of today. But in addition to that, we need to list it with a national firm. And I know for a fact that we can do that by under contract. I've done it personally before where you can, you've got to get another person or another firm to agree to your, to your, what you want to do. But you can do everything from if I sell it myself, you don't get anything and then brokers don't like that one, believe me. But you can get it done. To, yes, if we sell it, you get your 3% that we offered you as a brokerage fee, but you don't get the full fee, you know. And so I think, I think you could find somebody that may be very amenable to that.
Okay, Mr. Harvey?
Chairman, yeah. To clarify, do, do we need to, and this is going to come over to staff side, Mr. Suggs or Mr. Manning or Mr. Reynolds? If we were to do this, do we need to go out for some type of, and I hate this worse than anybody does, RFP, RFQ, whatever, or entertain bids from a national brokerage firm to represent the sale of this building? And, I mean, I know we're not talking the chamber getting commission dollars. I know that. So I'm talking, I'm talking other entities here. So it's, it's an option. It's not necessary. This is a Port Authority, a Port Authority item. Port Authority owns the, the building and, and the Port Authority is not bound by the county procurement code and that requirement to put it out for bids. If you all want to just direct administration to find a good one, pick a good one, enter into a contract at the prevailing rate, you can do that as well, either, however you want to handle it. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
This may also be able to extend to the property that we have there as well, once we get all the language repaired, that we can actually sell that property as well. Could list the property as well. People are looking for that obviously too in economic development.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Okay, what would you like me to say? Obviously, I'm for it, or I wouldn't have brought it up. So would you like a motion stating that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is that where we need to go from here?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm just trying to get some clarification as my esteemed colleague brought up. Mr. Chairman, I move that we, we seek out a realtor and in that contract that we offer the commission that was on the agenda today, the 3%, if we, if the chamber or our economic development or us personally sell that building, but at a regular brokerage fee if they sell the building. Is that close enough for you, Stacy?
And authorize the administrator to enter into a brokerage contract.
Okay, and I'll, I'll add that to it and see if.
Second. Okay, so we have a proper first and a proper second. All discussion.
I, I've got, I'm a little confused. I thought we just said that the chamber, we would not take a commission on that.
Chamber gets nothing, Mr., nothing. The only way that they get 3% would be, they don't get it. Who would get it would be the broker that sells it for them.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay.
If they sold it, if, if, let me see if I can help clear it up if I made, Mr. Chairman.
I got it, I got it.
Well, I'd like to make sure I have it. So the only way that the 3% would be paid by us to a broker is if we sold it ourselves. We'd be in the county, we'd be in the economic development branch, be in whatever. We sold it ourselves. That broker would still get 3%. But they deserve that because they go out and they, they advertise it and they put it on the market and they do the things that cost them money. So they deserve that 3%. And then the only way we would pay the total, the total commission was if they sold it. The broker would get the money. We or our economic development branch gets nothing out of this either way, no matter what happens, other than helping trying to sell the building, which I think should be the ultimate reward we're seeking.
And Mr. Chairman, I still have the floor. Let me say this. Are we going to allow, we're talking a national brokerage firm. We're going to allow, who's going to pick that firm? Is that going to be Mr. Suggs, Mr. Reynolds? Because we're talking national here. We're not talking.
In the motion, the motion stated that the county administrator could make that selection and enter into that contract. Is that what the motion stated?
Yes, sir.
If I could have the floor of Larry's.
Yes, sir.
I'm done, sir. Thank you.
I wanted to bring up that part, Commissioner Turner, because at the end, counsel suggested that you could tweak it to suit what the motion is suggesting today. I just want to bring that and make sure you have that ability so we don't bog this down and have to work on it again in two weeks. So, I mean, we might be missing something here today. Small, I'm sure, but you know, it could be.
Dana?
Thank you. Dana Jones, President, Putnam County Chamber. Just wanted to go back and revisit choosing of a firm. There's many national firms that specialize in that particular type of building and we would definitely offer our services to help provide a list of those for y'all's ability to pick the one you'd like. Just wanted to offer that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. So right now, we have a proper first and a proper second. Yeah, we have, under our discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, seeing, it's unanimous, so that is done. Okay, now let's move to any new business? Any old business? Then we'll adjourn Port Authority. We'll reconvene our board meeting and we'll move to public comment. Again, state your name, your address, limit it to three minutes and my.
Mr. Chairman, may I request a five-minute recess or a three-minute recess before we get started on public comment? Freeze, fine.
We'll take a three-minute recess before we start with public comment.
Vice Chairman took a little authority there.
Yes, he did. Break it up.
Little recess, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we will re-adjourn, I mean, re, yeah, reconvene our public, time for public comment. Terry Steves? Again, your name, your address and limit to three minutes.
My name's Terry Steves. I live at Bainbridge Road in Palacka, Florida. I'm here about the children's safety sign that I came a couple of months ago about. And I was supposed to get a phone call back and never got one. I got pictures of the children's safety sign that was up there at one time and it's missing. It's not there. And somebody was supposed to call me back and tell me why it was gone or put one back.
I can't hear you, Mr. Steves. You could talk right in that.
Yeah.
I don't hear a thing either.
I got a picture of the sign. I apologize. I got a picture of the sign, and I go to Public Works Department constantly, and they basically tell me they don't put them up or take them down. But on the bottom of the sign, it says, "Putnam County Public Works Road Department." I'm trying to find out why the sign was taken down, why isn't it put back? Children play in front of my house constantly. And this has been going on now, I mean, I was supposed to get a phone call to find out why it's not being, or why it was gone. Can you please find out why the sign is not there and put it back?
Yes, I assure you, I will find out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tim Hottang, Hooting, you're gonna have to come up here and pronounce that, I always mess it up.
Hoteling, I think.
Hoteling.
Any way you like.
Mr. Tim.
Just called me for dinner.
Howdy. I'm Tim Hoteling, I'm in San Mateo, and I'd like to talk about the presentation you just had on this children's trust fund. I sat through the workshop committee that you had, and there was an awful lot of questions. Brought up the fact that you're talking about almost $2 million. You're talking about the fact that you're gonna have to have an infrastructure put together to figure out how to take this money and give it to other people, and in this case, other people being nonprofits that don't have any transparency whatsoever, that don't have to make any reporting. That's, presentation was a "trust me, you can trust me." I assumed, if, if I had spent an hour talking to you all at a workshop, and you all gave me a chance to bring, come forth with a plan for a public presentation, I would've had something in hand. There wasn't a dad gum thing attached to the electronic agenda that came. He's talking about having mailed out stuff to all kind of people and talked to all kind of people, and unless you guys have had ex parte conversations, all you've got's him saying that that's happened, and he can't even produce a piece of paper for you. He laid a real heavy burden on you guys with all of his forever, "You can't deny the voters the right to," it's, "Voters are ready to step up, rah 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 rah," and you guys would be a bunch of chumps if you don't give them a vote. Let the voters vote, but what are they gonna vote on? You all have a responsibility, I'm sure that the legislature put it in, this whole thing making them come to you, so that there'd be a package that it'd be ready for the voters to consider. All you've got is a bunch of wind, and, which comes down to credibility. I remind you that that, anyhow, the former lawyer that passed all the conversation to you, in my mind, has a serious credibility issue, and you guys gotta sort it out. He went to the, the school board for Lift Putnam, "We're gonna have this wonderful plan where all these kids, we're gonna have all of these classes, and it's just gonna be just roses for all of the really wonderful people in downtown Palacka." They had the arts people that were coming in that got told that they were gonna have half the building, and they were gonna be able to have all kinds of arts revitalization of downtown Palacka, and then two months later, he says, "Oh, I was only fooling." You go ask Mr. Russo and the downtown arts people what they think about the credibility of what you've got. Right now, you have somebody that came here and didn't even make a public notice that you're talking about $2 million. You're talking about a half a mil more money, you didn't even make mention of the fact that you're already maximizing the cotton picking legal mandates as to how much you can take out of people's pockets. And when it comes time to vote, if this thing turns bad, when you asked, "How can you undo it?" They're gonna undo it by undoing you. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm really frustrated with the fact that you all didn't get anything resembling a plan, I'm really frustrated that he's been running around passing out stuff apparently behind your back. I'm really frustrated that he claims to have oodles of people coming and talking to you, and I see no sign on your faces that you've had any of that kind of conversation, which leads me to believe he's full of, pardon me. Yeah, questions? You got my opinion?
No, sir, I, we can have questions, any questions?
And I would've preferred to have him here to say that, the fact that this-
Well, Tim, that's what, we do know there's two sides to this, and we're looking on both sides.
To have him here.
Yes, sir.
And, and just, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, we also need to understand that Lift Putnam, this is not Lift Putnam-
Correct, separate.
-deal, it's, they're just one of the presenters and one of the cogs in the wheel, like they said, one of the spokes in the wheels.
Yes, sir. Okay, any other public comment? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that, we'll move to our consent agenda. Mr. Turner?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Harvey?
I have none.
Mr. Libel?
None.
Mr. Pickens?
I have none.
I have none.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board can approve consent agenda items A through J.
Okay, we have a proper second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those against, same sign. That moves, and we will now move to Mr. Tim Smith. Can we, for the record, who is the second on that motion?
The fat guy with the orange tie.
Hey, hey, I take offense to that. I'm trying to lose. Okay, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I don't have any particular items, but I would like to go back to the drug court proclamation issue that you spoke of earlier, to remind you that legislature does not allow its normal appropriation for the courts to be used for any non-traditional court. And so, drug courts, veterans' courts, teen courts, night courts, all those type of courts have to find their own funding mechanism. And so, years ago, when Judge Nichols brought this to this commission, there is a portion of one filing fee that is filed through the courts that goes to the county, and then the county can use those dollars to fund other court operations that the state doesn't. So that's the funding mechanism for drug court. So I just wanted to remind you of that as you go through budget preparations and discussions over the summer, that you'll see a drug court component that's in your budget. And that's the reason that it is there and authorized by the state through that funding mechanism to support that. So I just wanted to mention that because sometimes we forget how these things are funded, and so it's not avalon taxes, it is, it does come from a specific funding source. And it's not the money that's appropriated by the legislature for the courts. I just wanted to reiterate that so that everyone is aware of that as you go through your budget deliberations this summer. And with that, we have no other items. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we will move to our public hearings, and this is quasi-judicial, and-
Well, the, the first one is not quasi-judicial, the second one is.
Okay.
So before we get to the second one, which is the actual rezoning, if we get to that one based upon what happens in the first one, at that point, then I will ask for ex parte communications and we'll also swear in witnesses.
Okay, on the second. Okay, so, please go ahead.
Can we switch, so that my screen shows up on the screen?
Ed, you gotta turn that microphone on, please, sir.
Thank you. Ed Preston, Planning Staff. We've only have one project to bring to you today. It's a small-scale land use and zoning amendment. We'll, we'll present the land use issue first and then go on to zoning if required. So Clarence and Stacy Suggs have applied for a small-scale land use map amendment and a zoning change to change 3.44 acres from agricultural to industrial. They want to change it to allow light industrial zoning uses. The property is, if you start in Palacka and head north on 17, it's just over Rice Creek on your left, up 17. So we've got an aerial view of it, I believe that this is a 2017 aerial. There's a small area of wetlands over on the west, or left-hand side of your screen, and a few structures up toward the front on 17. It is currently zoned A1 agriculture, you can see across, I'm sorry, future land use designation is A1. You can see that the, there is some industrial property, land use just to the north of it, one lot away. The zoning is agriculture as well, but across 17, there is some industrial light, and you can see that there is industrial light zoning north of the property, a little bit of residential one parcel south of the property. And what is proposed is that that one block that we saw the aerial of would go to industrial light, future land use, which is the decision that we're on right now, to industrial. And so, we wanted to back up and show you from a little bit further away, that there is a lot of industrial in the general area. You can see the subject site is showing up just about as black in the center of the screen, and all the other colors are industrial uses of one kind or another. So, we wanted to show you what's in the existing future land use designation to make sure that you know what we're moving away from. I'm not going to read this, but the property is currently, has a residence on it and has a business on it. So that's what the agricultural use is now. What is proposed in industrial consist, is that in map, the map would consist of areas intended to be the primary industrial locations, and associated with that would be manufacturing, assembly, processing, and storage of products. It goes on to say that it may be used as allowed by the agricultural zoning district that it is. It is, there are limited residential uses that are allowed as an accessory to an industrial use, so the mobile home that sits on the property that serves as a residence can stay there even after some action be taken today. And going on, there are three more, four more items that have to do with the consistency with the comprehensive plan. I won't, I won't go into those in detail, but you can have community facilities and services and activity-based recreation, and we've got floor area ratios, and if they want to rezone to heavy industrial later, they can do that. But right now, it's just, they're asking for light industrial. We check all kinds of things to make sure that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we don't, we don't recommend approval unless we've checked traffic, I, US 17 is in good shape right there, and we have checked the spatial distribution on the future land use map, and we think that it's, it's, it's gonna be okay with infrastructure items. That is not the limit to what we look at. We look at other factors like the traffic, the flood zones, the wetlands, the soils, water and sewer, and so on. And just to make sure that, you know, that we've checked that, we've thrown up a couple of graphics that say, "We don't have any wetlands and we don't," well, there might be a little bit over on the west end side, west end, and we're out of the flood plain except for the extreme west end. So, our analysis is this, that the land use designation of industrial would be consistent with the proposed industrial uses that are requested. The subject parcel in question is adjacent to US 17, which is one of the requirements, and staff finds that the subject parcel meets both the future land use designation and the district zoning criteria. So our recommendation is that you find it consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the local requirements for zoning, and compatible with the surrounding land uses. Only one hearing is required, so this is an adoption hearing, and staff recommends adoption of the request to amend the future land use map from agricultural to industrial. Are there questions?
Okay. Mr. Libel, did you have your hand up?
Um, no, I'm fine.
Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Preston, I, I have one quick question. You said the property directly to the north is industrial, but I think there's a lot.
A lot in between.
There's a lot in between. Okay, that's all, the only question I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, so, do we have any public wants to speak for, or speak against? Okay, I see none.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we uphold the recommendation of the planning commission and approve this case.
Second. Okay, so we have a proper first and a proper second. Any discussion? I think so. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, same sign. Okay.
Some is.
All right, now, B. I guess we can start with, do you want to ask a question about the-
Yeah, well, yes, this is a, obviously a companion to the prior matter, this is the request for rezoning, that is quasi-judicial. So again, I'm gonna ask for any ex parte communications be disclosed by members of the board at this time, and then, and then our clerk will go ahead and swear in any witnesses that are gonna speak on the matter.
Okay, Mr. Lamm?
I've had none.
I've had none.
And I've had none?
I've had none.
I've had none.
Okay.
I've got to swear.
Or sworn.
Please swear.
I do.
I do.
Okay, Mr. Preston.
Thank you. This is a companion ordinance, this is the companion zoning to the land use that you just approved. The applicant has not changed. It's still Clarence and Stacy Suggs, we're still talking about 3.44 acres. They're asking to rezone the subject property from agriculture to industrial light in order to allow new business that requires industrial light, and there is an occupied dwelling on site. We've talked about where it is, the aerial hasn't changed. We still have a future land use, well, there was a future land use designation of A1, it is now industrial. The current zoning is Ag, and you can see industrial light north and residential to south, both of those are separated from the property by a parcel. And across US 17, there's some more industrial light, some industrial, public facilities a little bit further north than that. If you want to keep the agricultural, we've got what the language is there, but I'm not gonna go into that too much. What is proposed is the industrial light zoning district provide an industrial district for the use of industrial and mixed-use classifications in, on the map. There are so many allowed uses in industrial light that it took me two slides to show them to you. I'm not gonna read them off, but that's the first 10, and those are, oh, I thought there was a second page. The factors are that we looked at, again, traffic, flood zone, wetlands, and so on. And our analysis is that the proposed zoning district of industrial light would be consistent with the industrial uses. The subject parcel in question, adjacent to 17, which is classified as a principal arterial, and we find that the parcel meets both the future land use designation and the zoning designation. We find that it's consistent with the comp plan, consistent with the requirements for zoning, and compatible with the surrounding land uses. And again, we recommend approval of the request to amend the zoning map from Ag 1 to industrial light.
Ask for a comment.
Comment.
Okay.
I'm ready with a motion.
We have any public comment for, public comment against, seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a motion supporting staff recommendations and make an additional comment that if the vote is favorable today, that this is another small business with great potential in Putnam County. Good deal.
Second. Okay, so we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, so moves, any, any other discussion?
None.
Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move to appointments. Now, I'll go over to Mr. Libel, do you have any appointments?
I don't have any this week.
Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, I do. I'd like to reappoint Stuart Ryder to the Better Place Plan, our oversight committee.
Okay. Mr. Turner?
I have none this week, thank you.
I have none, sir.
Okay, Mr. Harvey? Okay, and I have none, so, close that part, and we will move to Mr. Suggs.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, just a couple things, just to let you know, commissioners know that we are full steam ahead with budget workshops with our department heads. We're probably about halfway through the first week in June, I believe, beginning June 4th and 5th, we have the- June 4th and 5th, we have the constitutionals, which you folks will be sitting in on as well. So we've got those scheduled. Things are going pretty much what we expected, slow in that area, but we're, we're trying to go through this thing as, with as much vision as we can on each budget line to see where we're at, see what we can do to help Putnam County, help this Board of County Commissioners, help our citizens out. Secondly, tomorrow, Press Tompkins and I will be flying to DC to meet with the Army Corps of Engineers on a project that we've gotten great support on. Hopefully, we'll get further support when we get there tomorrow. I'm also gonna meet with some of our representatives while I'm there, such as Congressman Yoho Staff. And so hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to bring back good news from, from DC at the next commission meeting. And lastly, we got notice yesterday from the city of Palacka that there is going to be a, a workshop, I believe, at 5:00 on Thursday. Then they're going to go right into their meeting at 6:00. Workshop is going to be discussing proposed increase to their water and wastewater rate structure, which will be very detrimental to what we're trying to do here at Putnam County. For example, Mr. Reynolds has ran some basic numbers on one particular entity, our sheriff's office at the jail. Last month, I believe, their water bill is a little over $6,000. If this increase that's proposed goes in, it will increase that monthly bill to $17,000 a year. Okay? With the limited time that we've had, we've, Mr. Reynolds is working...
$17,000 a year?
I'm sorry, 17 a month. My bad. From $6,000 a month to 17 a month. Thank you, Commissioner Turner, for, for that correction. So that's...
$112,000 a year.
So this is gonna be, that's just one particular count. Mr. Reynolds is trying to work through the numbers of other water bills that the county itself has. We're probably looking somewhere around $250,000 or so of a deficit to our general fund, if I'm not mistaken, give or take a few dollars if this rate structure goes in. And so again, that meeting is scheduled for a workshop at 5:00 on Thursday. I myself would be there to, at least to listen, or if not participate in the discussion, but I will be out of town. So I've asked Mr. Reynolds if he will partake in that meeting, and if anybody else would like to partake in that meeting, it's at 5:00 on Thursday. So that's all, we bring that to your attention today.
Real nice of you.
Sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but like, again, like I said, we got notice of this yesterday.
What time was the budget meeting on the 4th that you wanted us to be at?
Is it 9?
This is the first I've heard that you want me on the 4th, which is fine, but I kinda need a little notice other than from the afternoon to the 3rd.
Here it is.
Was that in our packet? I just missed it.
That was in your box. You, probably what?
In my box? Maybe I ain't special as you are to what's in my box.
You don't have a cubby?
Is it at 10:00, Stacy?
What is the date of the one on the 4th?
Why don't you take a picture of it?
I'll get somebody to give me one of them. I just wanna stick it in there for the 4th at 10.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Or Mr. Turner, you done?
I'm done for now, yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate for us to attend that 505 meeting? And, I mean, we're gonna speak on our own behalf, and I know what we're gonna speak about, but is that, we're not gonna break any sunshine laws, or?
I'll jump in on that one.
Thank you.
You just have to be careful not to, not to discuss anything that might come before you for a vote in the future.
Yeah, but anything of that meeting's coming to us for a vote in the future because, well...
So we can't talk about drilling our own well?
Yeah, we can't.
That would be correct.
But we can in workshop, we can in this meeting.
Absolutely.
Anything, we just can't talk about it out there.
Correct.
Amongst each other.
Correct. Amongst each other.
Okay. Mr. Turner, did you have any discussion?
No, sir, I think I better leave it at that for the day.
You discussed a budget workshop on what date, Mr. Turner?
June the 4th is what he just said.
At 10:00.
And would, would you cannot borrow that a minute, Mr. Harvey?
You may.
That's our review with the sheriff.
Yes, right. But then, we have one on the 5th too, or whatever. Would it be a possibility that we get some more of these sent out, or whatever?
Absolutely. We'll make sure to get one today.
And you can mail me one instead of sticking in my cubby hole, or whatever you called it. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Suggs, do you have any other good news?
No, sir. And again, I apologize. That was just, again, one of those things that we found out yesterday after going through as much work as we have on the budget to find out that, you know, we have a potential concern that's gonna come to us, and I just needed to share that with my Board of County Commissioners.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Mr. Manning?
I have nothing.
Okay, so we'll move to commissioner comments, and I'll go to Mr. Turner.
I'd like to take this opportunity to, to just mention how well I think that drug court thing was that we went through earlier. I mean, they do a tremendous service for this community, giving people a second and sometimes even a third chance. And so I, I just can't speak loudly enough about how I think that program helps our community and the people in it. And I think that's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, in Locken High School graduating, you can for sure count on rain. It always rains at the IHS graduating ceremony. Next, tomorrow night, Flora Home Pavilion that you partnered with, with Florida Power and Light will be dedicated at 6:00 at the Park and Flora Home. And Thursday morning, FPNL and the Chamber is putting together a tour of the solar facility by invitation only. There will be another public opportunity for FPNL to take more people out in the future. And one last thing, I serve, as you well know, as the co-chair of Rural Issues for the Florida Association of Counties. And I got a, received a call yesterday from Chris Doolin asking if I would attend the RAO meeting, Rural Economic Opportunity Meeting in Ocala, representing my position on the board in the internet, or the, you know, internet arena. So I would ask, in this public meeting, Mr. Turner, you worked very hard on that subject. If there's anything you could share through our administrator that I could take with me?
Yes, we...
Glad to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. We actually put together a set of talking points for Congressman Yoho's office.
I'm sorry, sir?
The stuff on the broadband, the talking points we put together for Congressman Yoho's office, if you could get a copy of them to Commissioner Harvey for, take with him to his FAC meeting.
Can do.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Mr. Libel?
Okay. Help, 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 help. Putnam County Animal Services, despite our recent success and, and, and good headlines, we're crowded to maximum right now with cats and dogs. We have a capacity of about 48. We have 48. I've offered to step up, starting this Friday from 9:00 to 1:00, and I want to ask each of you commissioners if you would come help. Commissioner Harvey especially, if you could bring your grill. I'm gonna buy hot dogs and, and soda and chips and that sort of thing. Would offer lunch. And Animal Services has cleaned up our downtown adoption facility, and we have two pallets of dog food, and we're gonna offer about 100 pounds per adoption. And we're gonna put signs out, but I'm asking for any of your constitutionals too, if you want to come out from 9:00 to 2:00 on Friday. Brandon Oliver from the Palacka Daily News is gonna help us, and I'm gonna invite each of you to go down to WPLK and IYD with me every morning at 8:00, 8:30, somewhere around there. George Deloach is gonna step out and help us. And Mr. Harvey, I know you go to the Hope Radio also. If you would kindly...
Do that.
Hawk this if you would, but we need to get some adoptions done to help our facility. We really are proud of the fact that we're no-kill, and we certainly are not gonna go back there, but to do that. The rescue groups right now are full. It's just kind of a strange situation that everybody's at capacity. Sometimes the, the spring breeding season comes early, and it has this year. So we've got some beautiful dogs and cats and kittens out there right now, so it shouldn't be so hard. But if you guys, if I could ask you to come out and help me Friday morning, if you don't have any plan, please, I'm asking you publicly to come do that.
This is at the landfill?
Nope, no, we, we have a downtown adoption facility at 6th Street and US 17, and it will be there. It's that building that's on a diagonal. I don't, Chairman Goddard, I'm not sure if you've ever been there, but it's pretty nice. Inside, we've got cages and this sort of thing. We hadn't used it in a while. We hadn't needed it, but we need it this time, and we're gonna be there, so.
6th Street and 17.
Yep. Sounds like Mr. Harvey and I will be cooking hot dogs. Come out and have them. I'll get some slaw made, and please, public, help us get some of these dogs adopted. Colonel Wells, if you can come out, you're welcome too, sir.
We'll be down there.
Okay, good deal. All right, come, and bill it on, as you talk to your media outlets, is come meet your elected officials and constitutionals and our sheriff's office, everybody involved. And the sheriff's office is very much involved in animal services, when we have cases that require, you know, deputized folks. Colonel Wells and our sheriff certainly step up to the plate every time. We thank you for that, sir. Okay, that's all I have to say. 100 pounds of food per dog and cat. Cat will, yeah, can't beat it. And all adoption fees, I'm sorry, I forgot this, are paid. These dogs and cats will be free, and they are up to date on their shots. Most of them are heartworm negative, and the same thing with the cats. So...
And they've already been spayed and neutered?
They are spayed and neutered. Everything will be ready to go. You take it home, you got a three-day holiday to bond with your new animal. And like I said, there's, this is the perfect opportunity to, to come out and adopt. Thank you.
Mr. Libel, will you send out a talking point when we get to the radio station?
Be glad to. I'll have it ready this afternoon.
Good, thank you, sir.
If I might add, one of those dogs was actually featured in, in the Palacka Daily News last week in the front page. It's a hound dog by the name of, I believe it's Tamara. She's a whitish color, and she's at, I, I met her out there last week, and she is the sweetest, sweetest dog you could ever want. So somebody needs to adopt it.
I'm surprised our county attorney didn't take that dog on.
I know.
You speak so fondly of her.
It's been, it's really...
If you wait until Friday, you'll get 100 pounds of dog.
Right, right.
Let me tell you, our county attorney's house looks like the animal services facility. He has adopted many dogs. I commend you.
I have, and, and it really, it breaks my heart to, to see those dogs out there. So anything we can all do.
Cool deal. All right. Mr. Pickens?
Commissioner Libel, you are such a salesman. I don't need a dog, but I'm thinking about maybe...
Yeah.
I don't need the food. So anyway, a couple of things, the...
Got one named Georgetown.
The Crescent City High School will hold their graduation ceremonies Thursday at 7:00 PM, and, and just like in Interlocken, we're hoping for no rain, so we don't have to move to the gym. If they moved to the gym, it's very limited on how many people can attend. So also, the Wolfson Bass Tournament was held this weekend. Joe, you correct me, 340-something boats?
I don't, 390s somewhere.
390s, so, and I was asked to participate in parking the trucks and the trailers as Colonel Wells and Gator Deloach, Taylor Douglas, Steve Overturf, Greg Bacon, and a number of people to park that many boats. It does take a little bit of organization, but that was good, and it's good for Putnam County and Palacka to have that, that Bass Tournament here every year. And a couple of Fridays ago, my wife asked me out on a date, and I accepted. And then I found out that we were going to the production of the 42nd Street play. And I found out it was 7:30. I usually go to bed about 8:30, so I said, I don't know if I can make through it. But I really didn't want to go, but I am so glad that I went. It was absolutely fantastic. If you didn't get a chance to see that, I don't know if they're done. But Jim Pignato, I believe is his name, does a great job with that group, and it's just really refreshing to see the young people up there and the talent that is in this county. Because some, some, most of them were from Palacka but from other areas in the Palacka, in the Putnam County, and it was absolutely incredible. So it was a, a date that I will never forget. So anyway, thank you.
And I'll go on that. I've seen quite a few plays there, and the, what he does with the school kids is incredible. It's always good. I've, I've never seen a bad one there. It's always good. I also wanted to bring up, you know, there's so many things that we have going on here, good, good programs. Last night, I was at Powell's, and, and that's, that's a, that's in conglomeration with the sheriff's office, and they do boxing. That's not something I ever got into, but they do boxing, and, but it was just great to hear those kids last night. And we need to congratulate all of those that are graduating. That's a big goal across all our schools.
We go to the celebration for the ones that are graduating from high school every year. This year, we have two of our Powell kids graduating from Crescent City and one from Palacka. So we do a big party last night after we come here and speak to them.
Oh, it was, it was great. I was, I was honored. But one of the things that I thought that really hit home was one of the, the fellows there was speaking that he's, he was a resource officer at Crescent City. And he basically, there had been two. When he came there, they lowered it down to one. And there were seven fights a day at Crescent City. And now, with these different programs that they've put in, working with the kids, being mentors to these kids, astronomically, there's about seven fights a year. From seven a day to seven a year, which, I mean, high school, there's always a little bit of tension sometimes. But it was just great, these programs that we have here, and a lot of people, we just don't know about these programs, but get involved with a program somewhere, somehow. They, they really make a big difference. With that, I just wanna...
....................................................................................
Yeah, that, that just astounded me when I heard that last night. From seven a day to seven a year. That's, that's quite an accomplishment in any high school, you know, but I'm glad to hear it's in ours. I just want to encourage everybody, go out here. There are so many things going on in Putnam County. It's incredible. It's just incredible. Thank you for being here, and we're adjourned.